Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Call this meeting to order. This is the February 24th Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Just want to welcome everyone. Thank you all for coming here, especially our guests. First things first, if you have a cellphone, if you wouldn't mind turning that on silent, and if you have an important call, if you could just take that out in the hallway, we'd appreciate it. There are emergency exits. Primary emergency exit is out the door to your right, and then another right down the stairs. Secondary is out the door to your right, and then a left past the elevator. We have a guest tonight that I'd just like to welcome, Ryan D. Bardinas. Where's Ryan? Ryan, welcome, welcome. Ryan is a scout, Boy Scout, doing, is it the civic duty merit badge, or?
Communications.
Communications merit badge, okay. All right, well, thank you so much. And we also have John Frederickson, Superintendent of Schools for our Complimentary County.
Right on cue.
Right on cue.
What merit badge is he getting?
Yeah, what merit badge are you here for, John? Well, Ryan, thank you so much for joining us. We thank you for being here with us this evening. All right, if everyone will join me and stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, our first item of business this evening is our community organization presentation, and we have with us Sister Marilyn Bouchard from the Joseph House. Welcome, Sister. If you wouldn't mind coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind invitation. I know that some of you may know Joseph House, and I know that some of you may also remember Sister Mary Elizabeth, who was our foundress. She was kind of a larger-than-life figure in the city, I think. And we like to think that she touched the lives and the hearts of the poor, not only in Salisbury, but in the much broader area. And I think thereby, we also hope that she touched the community with a spirit of outreach to those who are most vulnerable and in need. Sister was a witness, she was a teacher, and she was a great advocate for social justice. The Joseph House Crisis Center is located on Boundary Street, just down the street from the recycling center. It provides emergency and ongoing assistance for individuals and families in need. It's a volunteer-based organization, and it depends on private donations and occasional private grants. It opened in that location in 1984. If I had time, I'd tell you that history. It's a kind of a fun one for the city. But it does reach out to the tri-county and even four-county area for some of the assistance that we give. So Salisbury has a great outreach somehow through Joseph House. The great goal for Sister was always to affirm self-worth and dignity, and to help stabilize family life. She began by taking care of the very basic needs of food, clothing, financial help. And then she aspired to give the people that we serve the goals, the hope, and the faith in themselves, and faith in a God who loves them. The Crisis Center offers financial help for things like evictions, rental deposits, energy assistance, medicine, even helped with funeral expenses and other things, other incidences. It's often a last resort for families who have few places to turn for help. They can access our services by just demonstrating a need. The center includes a dining room, which serves hot lunches, thanks to area churches and organizations who help provide these. I know that one of our, one of your members on the council, very much a member of one of the churches that serves us well, Wesley Temple. We also have a day hospitality center, where homeless men and women can get breakfast, lunch, a hot shower, clothes washed, and even replaced as needed. We have a food pantry, which serves supplemental food, and a payee program for those who are having a hard time handling their own finances. That plus advocacy, which is very important to any kind of stability. It's open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from about 8:30 to noon, for the food pantry and for financial assistance. Monday through Friday, the hospitality center is open for the homeless. I know statistics can be boring, but sometimes they're interesting. In nineteen, excuse me, in 2013, we gave out 20,181 bags of groceries. We served 13,564 meals in our soup kitchen. And in our hospitality, it's hard to put a total figure on it, but we serve anywhere from 20 to 30 homeless persons a day, and this includes men, women, and children. Sister Elizabeth didn't stop there with the center. She founded the Village of Hope, which is a two-year transitional living program for at-risk women and children. That's over on Lake Street. And nine years ago, we opened the Joseph House Workshop, which is right beside the Crisis Center on Boundary Street. That's a two-year transitional program for men. There, they can hone or relearn life skills, they can live in community, find social justice for themselves, and hopefully spill it over into the greater community as job holders and good citizens. Both programs aspire to restore dignity, new hope, and opportunities on which to build a future for these people. Joseph House is ever grateful to the city of Salisbury for the many support areas and times that they've given us support in many ways. The office of the city has helped us with grants, assistance, personal encouragement, and commitment in so many ways. Sister Mary Elizabeth never ceased to applaud Salisbury and its surroundings for its very gracious and giving citizens and their ever generous hearts. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity. We didn't want to take too much time. We know you have a business agenda ahead. But again, we're grateful for the city of Salisbury and your gracious and kind-giving hearts. God bless you all.
Sister, thank you, and God bless you. And could I get you, while we have you, could I get you to just repeat for the, for PAC-14 audience, the hospitality center address?
Oh, it's on Boundary Street. You can reach Boundary Street both off of 50, just beyond where the intersection is, where Salisbury, that four-way stop there. Or you can also access it off of West Road. A lot of people know the recycling plant around there, and so we're just down the pike from that little area.
Thank you, Sister.
Is there a contact number?
It's an eight, eight, eight twelve, excuse me, eight twelve Boundary is the center. Eight sixteen is the Joseph House Workshop.
Eight twelve and eight sixteen, thank you.
We actually have our, our address up there.
Mr. Spees, I think asked a good question, too.
Is there a contact number, Sister, if anyone likes to get involved or rent services?
Sure. The actual contact number for the center itself is four ten, seven four nine, four two three one, three nine, excuse me. If you wanted to contact Dave Heininger, who's our director over there, it's four ten, five four three, eight one seven one.
And before the meeting, you, just maybe another minute, you said that there were some needs that were not being met because of things going away recently. Would you have, would you like to give a moment to that?
Well, I have to admit that one of our greatest needs and our losses in this last year or so has been our ability to get bread. Bread is such a vital part, and it's always been quite ample and sufficient. But a few places have closed down from where we used to get bread, and the bread is being sold in another direction. So we're not getting the bread we used to. We get it from a few area grocery stores and/or restaurants, but that's about, that's about our source of bread right now, so it's a, it's a big loss for us. Anyway, thank you for asking.
Thank you, Sister. Okay. Well, next item on our agenda is the adoption of tonight's legislative agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mrs. Shields, is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Mr. Mitchell first. There any amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Mr. Spees, did I hear you in there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed. All right. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
All right. Miss Cohen.
Second.
All right, seconded by Mrs. Mitchell. All right.
Good evening. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the February 3rd closed session minutes, the February 3rd, 2014 work session minutes, and the February 10th regular meeting minutes, and that's it.
Any changes, edits, amendments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is Resolution Number 2373. This is a technical assistance grant, kind of came up shortly here. Entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2373.
So moved.
Second.
By Mrs. Shields, seconded by Mrs. Mitchell. All right, Mr. Arrington.
Good evening, Council President and members of the city council. Tonight, I will read for your hearing Resolution Number 2370, 2373. A resolution of the city of Salisbury to approve a Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development Technical Assistance Grant, application for funds to provide for the creation and printing of an all-inclusive business development process document, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents necessary for the receipt of said funds. The Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development has solicited applications from eligible jurisdictions to apply for funding under the Technical Assistant Grant Program for fiscal year 2014. The city of Salisbury is eligible to apply for funds from DHCD and through the Technical Assistant Grant or through other programs of the department or in cooperation with other state departments or agencies may provide a dollar-to-dollar match for the financing for the, for the project to assist in making, making it financially feasible and supporting business attraction, development, and retention, which is an important aspect of the city initiative and perceived business friendliness and process help should be readily available. The council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, does hereby authorize the submission of an application for technical assistance grant funds to forward the city's business development and retention initiatives. This will be accomplished by applying for approximately $944 to provide funds for the creation and printing of an all-inclusive business development process document.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arrington. Are there any questions for Mr. Arrington or Ms. Kordakowski?
I think it would be good if the, the administration could tell the public what that document amounts to.
Mark, do you mind?
Essentially, what this project kind of started as was a trip to Frederick, Maryland, where I had kind of gone to go learn what they're doing in their offices. And when I was there, they showed me a document they had, which basically just entails the entire business development process. So that's everything from licensing permits to marketing hiring, and it just kind of spells out what is needed by those wanting to open a business within city limits. So I was looking at the marketing collateral we have now, which is just kind of a series of a lot of pamphlets and maps, which can be kind of construed as cumbersome. And I thought that a project that kind of streamlined all that and made it very organized and very enticing would be needed by the city of Salisbury.
Would this, would this process necessitate a redesign of the materials that we have currently?
I believe so. The materials we have now, like I said, are just a bunch of pamphlets. I don't know if you've seen them in the front hallway, but it really is just a folder full of documents that aren't very organized. So I would like to have them reorganized and put into all one document, lots of pretty colors, so.
So are you, are you envisioning, envisioning a sort of booklet that includes not only the process sort of flow chart, but also all the information for, you know, I know some of those brochures are for the enterprise zone application process, the downtown facade loan program, things like that?
It would include everything.
Okay.
And what do you anticipate the cost would be? I know it's all going to be provided by grant monies, but.
It's not all provided by grant monies. We are requesting $944. There is a dollar-to-dollar match requirement, so we would be putting forward, I believe it's 991, which is a little bit over, and some of that is an in-kind donation from DeCarlo Printing. And the actual study would be putting forward $400.
And that'll come before us later on, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Kordakowski or Mr. Arrington? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution 2373, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, next item on our agenda is ordinance Number 2275. This is the second reading of the budget amendment approving the purchase of nine electronic control devices. I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2275.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Spees and Ms. Shields. Okay, Mr. Tillman.
Okay, this is the second reading, reading of this ordinance, the ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY14 general fund to appropriate funds received from the current year surplus for the purpose, purchase of nine electronic control devices, otherwise known as ECDs. Whereas the city of Salisbury requests a transfer from the current year surplus fund to the police services operating account in the amount of $12,500. This transfer is for the purchase of electronic control devices. Whereas this equipment will be deployed within the police department's patrol squads and become part of the use-of-force continuum as part of a less-than-deadly-force option to subdue non-compliant or combatant offenders. And whereas the benefit of the technology is such that the police officers will have a, will have a use-of-force tool to achieve offender compliance without having to put hands on the offender, lessening the risk of injury to the police officer, as well as reducing workers' compensation claims. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2014 general fund budget speed camera subaccount be amended as follows, with an increase in current year surplus fund of $12,500 and an increase in the police department budget of an equivalent amount.
Thank you, Mark. So first things first, the, the edits that were made, are those all considered administrative, or do we need an amendment to adopt those edits, those changes?
No, I recommended on the last session that it was just administrative.
Thank you. All right, questions? Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. I just want to take a minute to say thank you. I realize we've got Colonel Barkley and several police officers here this evening. I just want to say thank you for being here, for showing your support. I don't, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda pertains to the police department, so thank you. And I want to thank my fellow council members. I think this is a positive step forward for protecting our officer's safety and protecting the citizens of Salisbury. Had a good conversation with the chief, as well as our state's attorney, Matt Masserello, the other night about this, and Sheriff Mike Lewis, all are very much in support of this and have encouraged us to move forward. And I hope that this pilot program provides you with the evidence you need to, to move forward. So with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2275, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. And before we move on, I just want to take a minute, because I realize I hadn't looked up there in a minute. We have a number of additional Boy Scouts or Scouts in, in the audience. Can you all just stand up for a second? I just want to say thank you for being here.
And thank you for choosing scouting.
That's right. And is everyone working on their communications merit badge? All the same merit badge? Okay, great. No, you're not? What, what are you working on? Citizenship in the community, okay. All right, well, great.
I think he should gavel the meeting at the end.
I'm sorry?
I think he should gavel the meeting closed at the end.
I mean, you're absolutely right. So we'll have you come up and gavel the meeting closed at the end.
That will actually be after a closed session, though, so.
Oh. Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. All right, well, thank you all for being here. Ordinance Number 2277 is the next item on our agenda. This is the water quality inlet project on Waverly Drive. I will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance Number 2277. Moved by Ms. Mitchell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cohen. All right. Mr. Tillman.
Okay, the, the purpose of this ordinance is to modify the description of the water quality inlet project provided for in ordinance Number 2167 to reduce the aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds and general obligation bond anticipation notes authorized to be issued pursuant to ordinance Number 2167 from $1 million to $531,000. We discussed at the last presentation of this ordinance that basically the scope of the project changed, the cost of the project went down, and the state of Maryland doesn't want to lend us as much as they previously were willing. And if you have any further questions about the details of the project, obviously, our head of public works is here to answer those questions, but.
You mean, that's not, that's not your job description?
I, I cannot explain any of the equipment or the changes.
Having read this several times now, I'm not sure I could either. But, okay, any questions for Mr. Molds?
No, I believe at the last session, it was simply that the project that the money was for came in under budget, and the state did not want to have it just left with us to reallocate something else, that they had specifically given us money for that particular project. Is that correct, Mr. Molds?
Yes, that is correct. They, they would take the funds back, and we would have the opportunity to reapply for additional funds in the future. But we would have to do that process. We couldn't hold on to them and extend the project. Try it as we might.
Valiant effort.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2277, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you all very much. Looking forward to that project going. Mike, can you share with us the timeline on that project?
We'll need to get an updated timeline. Obviously, it has to go through the Board of Public Works and the approvals from the state of Maryland, so they kind of control that process a little bit. But I would, I'm hoping by this summer we'll be under construction.
Summer, okay, great, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda, and I apologize to Colonel Barkley for my comment earlier, ordinance Number 2278 for first reading. This is the budget amendment for the purchase of one new vehicle for the police fleet. I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2278.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cohen, seconded by Mrs. Mitchell. Okay, Mr. Tillman.
All right, as the memo indicates, the purpose of this budget ordinance is to replace an older 2003 Ford Crown Victoria with a more efficient vehicle, and to equip that vehicle with all the necessary, the figure includes installation of equipment such as emergency lights, siren, and communication equipment. The vehicle would be incorporated into the fleet at the direction of the chief to maximize both life and fuel efficiency. Salisbury Police Department has three similar vehicles, two 2012 Chevy Impalas and one 2013 Ford Fusion. All of these vehicles are not as durable and capable for rugged, round-the-clock use as a full-size police package cruiser such as the Chevrolet Caprice. However, they are much more efficient and practical if deployed in areas of the police department where a full-size vehicle is not needed. This is an ordinance of the city approving a budget amendment of fiscal year 2014 general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the general fund speed camera account to aid in the purchase of one new vehicle for the police fleet. The, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2013 general fund budget is hereby amended as follows, with an increase in the general fund surplus account 01000-469810, revenue by $27,300, and an increase in the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
I have one question, and maybe this is best directed at you, Colonel. The, the new vehicles, the Ford Fusions and the Chevy, what is it, the Caprice? The Chevy Caprice. Do we have enough information yet where we know their utility? You know, once they're, once they are deployed, I mean, are they serving us as well as the, as the old Crown Vics? And, and then a second part to that is, I'm wondering, is their intended use any different? You know, is, is the use between the Fusion and the Caprice the same, you know, as one?
Okay, answer your questions. In regards to the Chevrolet Caprice, we're, we're still evaluating those. We're going through some growing pains, there's some things that we're learning in regards to those. In regards to the Ford Fusion, these will not be used by our patrol officers as it is in the patrol fleet. They will be used by either admin or CID, somewhere where it's less stress on the vehicle itself.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. We budgeted, I believe, for five vehicles, is that correct?
I believe so, ma'am, yes.
Have those all been purchased, or is this in place of one of those?
Oh, no, no, no.
We're still getting the five cruisers? Those were all cruisers, right?
Yes, ma'am. Those are patrol vehicles.
Patrol.
Yes.
Was it a mechanical breakdown that necessitated this, or just?
Absolutely. You can see the mileage on the vehicle. The vehicle actually blew an engine.
Okay. It happens. Thank you.
Just for the public knowledge, the, it was found that the vehicle needs repairs in excess of $4,700. That's a chunk of change for an 11-year-old car.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Thank you. I think, you know, Mr. Spees, this goes right back to the, the current vehicle, the condition of the current vehicle. This goes back to our discussion about, the discussion we had at work session about trading these vehicles in in partnership with the VOTAC program, the program at Parkside High School, and certainly something we want to look into in the future.
Still working on the communications.
Excellent. But with regard to this particular purchase, are there any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2278, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, before we have, before we go enter into closed session. Before we have, before we go enter into closed session, we have a couple items, a couple requests for public comment, and then I do want to take an opportunity, thank you, Mr. Tillman, I do want to take an opportunity to remind everyone that on Tuesday of this week at Emmanuel Wesleyan Church on Beagle and Park Drive and Route 50, we will be hosting our second Coffee with Your Council at 6:30 PM. Everyone is invited to attend. This is where you, the citizen, sets the agenda. This, the agenda is not set by council, it's set by the attendees, so to talk about anything you want to talk about. And we had a large crowd at the first one, and it was a great event, and look forward to, look forward to this next event. And we're grateful to the, everyone at Emmanuel Wesleyan Church for allowing us to host it there, inviting us, and for providing coffee, donating coffee and donuts, which we are incredibly grateful for. So, thank you. So please attend. You can find more information on the city website, or you can contact the city clerk, Ms. Nichols, at 410-548-3140.
Aren't coffee purveyors serially donating coffee? So the last one was?
They had been. The last one was Rise Up.
Okay.
Coffee donated.
And.
Even though we did, you know, we did budget a little bit of money, we have gotten everything donated so far, and this time, it's being provided by Emmanuel Wesleyan Church. They have a, they have a little donut shop and coffee shop inside the church, and they're providing it.
Donation is cheerfully accepted.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Day, if you could just repeat the date?
Yes, absolutely.
Because these tapes do get replayed, and I wouldn't want somebody showing up.
At next Tuesday. It's Tuesday, February 25th at 6:30 PM, and that is tomorrow. Thank you. Okay, so we have two requests for comment. I'll invite Ms. Gibson up first.
Kay Gibson, taxpayer, city of Salisbury. I have some concerns about the new proposed stormwater utility fee. I understand that we do not have to do anything with it at this point because the state does not require Salisbury or Wacomico County to participate in this particular, what people call quote-unquote "the rain tax." I'm concerned that we're jumping in before we need to. I'm also concerned, when you call it a fee, that it starts out at $5, which probably if people are not too concerned, out about $5.25, but of course, then it jumps to 25, then it'll jump to 50, and then it'll keep jumping every time you have a project you want to do. You'll come back to the taxpayers and want more money from us, money a lot of people don't have. I'm concerned that we finish the projects that we start. We have the wastewater treatment plant. We are dumping the refuge into the water because we're not able to process. We've had some major spills. I'm concerned about a zoo that is a major polluter of E. coli into the water system. You could not build that zoo where it is currently. It is on floodplain. It has more than a 3% grade. We either need to close it, or we need to move it. We don't need to come back constantly to the taxpayers to continue on one reason or another, to continue asking for more and more money. Quite frankly, the biggest polluter of the bay, we're not going to save the bay. The biggest polluter of the bay is the rivers coming into the bay. One of the major ones is the Sesquahanna River. The Sesquahanna River drains out of West Virginia, out of Pennsylvania, brings a lot of silt with a lot of byproducts and heavy metals in it. We have the dam at Sesquahanna, which was supposed to stop the silt. Unfortunately, it no longer can because its capacity has reached overflowing. So the sediment is being dumped directly into the Sesquahanna. Until the state or Sesquahanna Power comes up with the money to redo the silt basin, we're going to continue getting the dumpage. There is no reason for us to jump the gun. Let the state, let the Sesquahanna River get it straightened out. You get straightened out with the sewer treatment and do something with the major polluter of the zoo, then come back to the citizens and say, "Well, now we're ready to approach more projects." We don't have to do it right away. There's no reason to do it right away, and there's no reason for any citizen in the city of Salisbury to think that you're going to stop at $5.25 on this fee. You won't. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gibson. Your questions and comments will be noted again by the city clerk, and if there's anything that the administration has in the future to respond to you, I'm sure they will. Just a couple things that I'll offer. One, the, this moving, moving the zoo, we could probably price that out and just see what that might cost the taxpayers. It would probably be a lot. And then the other question about the wastewater treatment plant, I don't have the numbers currently, but I'm fairly certain that we recently received some notifications regarding grants and loans from the wastewater treatment plant. I believe that it's under design right now, is that right? Okay, it's under design right now, so I know that process is ongoing, but we can get you an updated, clear calendar of what the process is and where we are on it. Thank you.
Could I just make a quick comment about the zoo? It should also be noted for the public that the zoo brings in, this study was done in 2010 by SU, the Beacon Center, zoo brings in $17 million, in excess of $17 million in economic benefit to this area every year through the visitors that come here and spend money to stay overnight, they spend money to go to lunch, they spend money to go to dinner, and it is very beneficial for us to have that zoo. So, yes, it costs some money, but it doesn't cost $17 million a year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullard?
I'd like to respond to that. I think I should have the opportunity to respond to the civic comments.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's very unfair. When statements are made that are untrue and do not address the issue, which is the pollution the zoo is dumping.
Ms. Gibson.
Then we should have the right to respond.
Okay, and, and Ms. Gibson, there were statements that you've made that are not true as well, so, I mean, let's, you know.
I'd have to provide the documentation.
Okay. But let's continue that conversation at another date. All right, Mr. Bullard? Bullard?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Sure.
I am a stone's throw outside the border of Salisbury, but as a construction company, my customers are the people of Salisbury and the businesses of Salisbury, and I speak on their behalf, and also on behalf of my daughter, who is a homeowner and taxpayer in the city of Salisbury, if I may. And before I start, I have one question, I have a zillion questions here, but I only need an answer to one of them, and the... Ms. Mitchell, I looked at the tape of the last meeting on the 10th, I believe it was, and you started out by mentioning that this is set up as a state enterprise fund, or an enterprise fund. Is that money to be kept in Salisbury or sent to Mr. O'Malley?
No, that stays here. What an enterprise fund does is set it aside, it's like having a separate bank account that all the money goes in, only works on these projects that are dedicated to stormwater.
That are in the city of Salisbury.
In the city of Salisbury.
Thank you for that clarification. I also did overhear on the tape, after listening several times, immediately after that, there was a voice that mentioned that this, these funds would be used for maintenance of existing stormwater structures. And I would like to say a no to that, as my opinion, because we already have that tax money base set up. This is, this is to add to and improve what we're doing now, or to expand on what we're doing now with wastewater. So I'd like to kind of make that clear. Over in the five counties that like this tax, WBA L's report said Tuesday's storm, the big snowstorm, closed state government early, but not before many committees held hearings on this matter. Tuesday's storm prevented the bill's supporters' travel, but those opposed were well represented. I guess the supporters don't have snow tires, or there are none. So that's what they think of it over there, too. First of all, our mayor volunteered our city to pay a tax that was not required of us, and that's my understanding, that we're volunteering to pay this tax. We cannot afford to pay, and during the entire meeting, the elephant in the room was never mentioned. Ringing of hands and wiping of brows went on about how to charge who for, pay for this tax. It should be on the water, should it be on the water sewer bill, a separate bill? Should it be a lien on the tax property? The elephant in the room is still there, was not addressed. Paying this fee was mentioned supposedly to maintain existing infrastructure. I address that, we already pay taxes for that. The issue presented by the Chesapeake Bay Foundation is the effect of rinsed solids off impervious surfaces on bay and marine life. So let's talk about elephants. The elephant is the lack of an easel in the middle of the room with a physical plan graphed on it, or a projection from the overhead, exactly what the citizens are here to pay for. You want to charge this money to save the bay, but there's no plan. The elephant is, uh... What will the citizens buy with the money that will filter the water that runs off the impervious surfaces and into the bay? What physical machine? What filter? What pond? What infrastructure is to be built with the extra money? There's nothing out there. How much does one cost? How much will it cost to operate per year? How many will we need? Where are the drawings, the blueprints, even a barn app sketch? You have no product to sell, no plan, only give us money and we'll save the bay. We have a city planning and zoning department. We have an SU Small Business Development Center. We have Salisbury-Wacamico Economic Development. We have Greater Salisbury Committee. We have planners for this. We don't need to collect money to put in a pile to pay people, and speaking of paying people to plan this extra, we've never even set up the table and chairs and picked the people that we're going to use to make the plan. The Chesapeake Bay Foundation has been collecting money to fix this problem for 42 years, and the bay is getting Cs and Ds. They don't have a plan. Look on their whole website, they have one plan at, on about the fifth page, and it says that we're going to do this in two years, or the EPA is going to fine us. So we're volunteering to start today to vote on getting something going, giving ourselves a two-year deadline, and in two years, we're not only going to be paying the tax, now we're going to be paying a fine because we never set up the table and chairs to decide what the heck we're going to do. What kind of, what are we doing here? Stop! Also asked in the last meeting, what relationship is it to the wastewater treatment plan? I'll explain that. The $64 million or $80 million, whatever, past retrofitting, the city dove into with money and no proven plan, no other city where it's worked before, threw out a warranty, spent the money, and it doesn't work. Now we've got to spend the money all over again. That's what I asked you to do. We don't have a plan for this, so why are we spending money or collecting money? What are we going to spend it on? Let's decide that first. We've got a nice downtown revitalization plan that nobody likes, and it's still in the works, but at least we're not getting taxed for it. I understand from Mr. Muller that big, big six-foot pipe that goes up Waverly is planned for filters, and that's a good thing. Changing the type of filters, and that's, that's a good thing. We need to keep up, and we need to keep up with, with, I have nothing against cleaning the bay or, or cleaning up our act, but in this fact, in this, for these reasons, I'm, I'm calling a stop. Also, we've got the hospital that I was a superintendent on that put in pervious paving, whether it's the concrete parking lot or the asphalt by the garage. Be, dump a five-gallon bucket of water on that, and it's gone. It's in place of a stormwater retention pond. All the Walmart parking lot roof water goes into that pond over there by the trailer park. It never goes to the bay. Those are 100-year ponds, 100-year flood. These people have already paid a stormwater utility fee in the amount of 20% of their whole project in advance. And now you want to charge them quarterly to keep paying for more of that? And, and they're not, they're not polluting. Brad Gillis brought up a very good point last week when he said that we needed to tie this money to physical projects of new infrastructure goals. He's right. The citizens of Salisbury deserve to have a legitimate plan or plans drawn up and presented with five points in mind. How this specific infrastructure project works, how it cleans actual runoff water from roofs and driveways before putting it in the bay. How much will this specific unit cost? How many of these will we need in the next 20 years? How are they actually working in other cities our size and in our river situation and elevation situation? And we need to know all these things before we sign up for anything. We're in economic depression here, the seventh fastest declining economic base in the United States of a city of our size. 100 manufacturing companies have left in the last 20 years, taxes, taxes, and more taxes. Unemployment is highest ever. 40% of our working-age adults in this town are not working or paying taxes. That's where your tax base is going, to unemployment. People don't have jobs. 53% are carrying the 47% and paying your tax base. This is why city funding's down, the 50... I just said that. By actively discussing this tax at a meeting such as the last one, and actively passing it on the first reading, you are proactively driving Salisbury to ruin. You are proactively telling business and citizens, "It's time to pack it in and get out of town." You're driving the people to look for a different state to live in because their property values are going to be going down. With all these impending fines coming up, and more money to pay and more taxes to pay, property values are going to go down because people aren't going to want to live here. You're actively promoting and assuring the projected minus 3.8% GMP, which is projected by the end of 2014. You're guaranteeing that's going to come true. You also need to have yourselves a meeting and decide whether you will stay on this path or you're going to un-volunteer us from this tax and get with finding new businesses to come to this town, and how are you going to get new businesses to employ more of our citizens, and so they can pay taxes, and so you can have money for projects to improve the city. Lead po, lead in a positive way. Lead by bringing business here, not chasing it away. And right now, all you're doing is chasing it away, and every time you mentioned rain tax, chicken tax, this tax, we've already had 40 tax increases in O'Malley's administration. Now we're talking 41 and 42? And who knows what is coming up at the next meeting? 43? This is not the way to build a city. This is not the way to build jobs and to keep businesses here, because businesses aren't going to have any customers. Customers are running out of discretionary money because they're paying it in taxes, so I don't get home improvements from them anymore. They don't have the money. They'll patch, they'll ask me to go up and caulk a hole in the roof when their, their whole roof needs replacing, or something like that. They're fixing what's broken, they're not building anything. And I'm sure you can just drive up and down the streets and see. And I'm sure you can just drive up and down the streets and see that. It's, it's obvious to everyone. I thank you for your time, and I please ask you to take a step back and look at it from a business, a Salisbury businesses' point of view, and Salisbury customer and, and citizens' point of view, and not from how, how are we going to get some more money point of view from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullard. Just a couple things. I encourage you to work with Mr. Mulz to get answers to some of your questions. Last, our last meeting when we discussed this was the sixth in our discussions, the sixth meeting, and a lot of the questions you asked were answered in meetings prior to our last meeting, so we didn't discuss those things again. They'd already been discussed by council, but I encourage you to reach out to the Department of Public Works and the administration. I'm sure, I'm positive many of those questions can be answered. That plan you talked about is a, is a thick plan. It is in place, it does exist, it was presented to council. I encourage you to look through that. It may not satisfy your concerns, but it definitely exists and is worth looking at. Again, you know, you have every right to disagree with it, and you may disagree with it, but it, it exists, and I encourage you to look through it. And, and the stormwater retention ponds and the impervious, or excuse me, the pervious paving systems that you mentioned, both of those things, as well as the, everything that was designed and built following the 2010 Stormwater Design Guideline update, I think this council is very interested in providing some sort of credit system for, or even waiver system for. I mean, you know, we don't want to charge people twice for, for improvements to their property. We certainly don't want to do that because that is bad for business. So, you know, I'm speaking for myself, really, I shouldn't say this, council. I'm interested in that, and I believe some of my colleagues are, I believe all my colleagues are, based on our past discussions, and I encourage you to come back here and keep sharing that, that thought and that perspective with us. And I know, Mr. Gillis, you mentioned his remarks. I know he and the Chamber of Commerce, in their, in their support of the stormwater utility, have some caveats, and they're looking for the very same things that you mentioned and that you agreed with. So I appreciate your thoughts. Anything else from council? Thank you. Okay, and that's all we have on our agenda this evening, other than our closed session. So I will entertain a motion to enter closed session.
So move.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Tillman.
Yes, Ms. Gibbs.
I'm, I'm not sure what exactly we're going to be considering in this closed session, but the subject matter that was alluded to in the email to us today, I'm wondering, is, is this a discussion for closed session, or are we going to be having a policy discussion as well that belongs in open session?
If such a policy discussion were to arise, I would recommend that we return to open session, but off to find out what questions are to be asked of me, but it's about ongoing litigation.
Okay. And are we able to give any more details than the perfunctory, what's in the open meetings law exceptions? Often we will talk about, we will try to provide what information we can to the public so that they understand what it is we're referring to. So to what extent might we be able to do that in a statement out to the public at this time? I mean, can we tell them what the litigation's referencing, or, you know, whether we're going to be making a decision on something tonight? I honestly don't know.
Okay, I, I think that would be best done when we emerge from the closed session.
Okay. Well, then I would just ask that we not have too abrupt closing of the, the meeting so that if there are things that we need to discuss in open session for the public's benefit, it can be done. Also, if you might want to have a paper towel, you've got some water there that's very close to your...
Thank you very much.
Must, must be leaking.
I do, thank you. All right. Any other comments, any other thoughts, questions? Okay. And all those in favor of entering closed session, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We're going to enter closed session now, and we'll emerge hopefully shortly.